Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the June 21, 2017, meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors. May we have a roll call, Mrs. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle. Mr. Chivone.
Here.
Mr. McGarvey.
Here.
Mr. Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Eckert.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mrs. De Batista.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Present. Mr. Burns, may we have the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the recognition, I would just like to congratulate Samantha Shemlock, who will be our new junior board rep for the 2017-18 school year, and she will be joining us for the first time at the September board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, number three.
Public comments. We have three people tonight. First, we have Mr. Zerdi Dobi.
Zerdi Dobi Tinnikam, number 10, which is the budget. And so you're going to raise our taxes again this year. I attended the meeting for the Delaware County Council this morning and brought to their attention that you were going to raise our taxes again, as you have done the previous year and the year before that. And I referenced this agreement, which is the airport agreement agreed to in April of 2015 by the township, the county, the school district, and the city of Philadelphia. And I referenced the tax or the fixed guaranteed payments, which are $1.86 million to be distributed equally, which is the dispute I make, in that it should not be equal distributions, that it should be according to the tax rate. Now, there's an additional issue there, because the properties that this $1.86 million is based on, under Exhibit A in this document, list the Henderson Group properties, which are six properties. They are currently listed to be, you know, for sale. The airport wants to buy them. There's approximately 140 acres. The current assessment for those properties is $11,900,000. Now, according to resources, the asking price by the Henderson representatives is $180 million, now, which is approximately 15 times what the assessed value of the property is. Now, when I brought this up to the Delaware County Council this morning, I said that that's a disparity where if it is true, and they get that price, that we've been, the school district and the county and the township have been losing money in the millions of dollars over the years that that assessment has remained at $11,900,000. Now, so it's one of the reasons why I bring it up to you, that your refusal or stiff-necked resistance to go after and renegotiate that part of the agreement with the township and the county, and to recover the money, which you are losing at the rate of $2,000 every single day since September the 1st of 2015, is a problem. Chairman Sevare of the Delaware County Council, I'm going to reference the article that appeared in Town Talk written by Kevin Tustin, in which he mentions that the budget, that you're going to have an increase, and that the reason you're having an increase is that 30% is for benefits and pension increases. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I brought this up and referenced it, because there have been a number of editorials in the Daily Times regarding the pension crisis at the state level. And I asked Representative Sevare, because he was a former legislator in Harrisburg, about during 2001, 2000, another area that was mentioned, that that was the time when the state legislator increased benefits to the employees and the teachers' union, as well as to themselves. And since that time, the funds have now been hemorrhaging money, and the ability to make up that money has fallen on the taxpayers as a burden to them. I asked him to comment, looking back now as a former state legislator, whether he would have a comment on that, and he did not have a comment on that. So for you, to continue to raise our taxes and not review this agreement with the airport or with the township and the county is going to result in our taxes being raised. Now, finally, I just want to reference something that was made, or in the Daily Times, about a current board director, Mr. Burns, and that the person who he replaced was Brian Razzie. And in the article that talks about the race for Glenn Olden Norwood District Judge, Mr. Razzie smears a board director. And how he has conducted himself when he was a board director is no example of how a board director should have conducted himself. He was very mean and vicious in his conduct toward the administrators, specifically Dr. Nancy Hacker when she was the superintendent. And he made every effort, as long with other board directors, to make her time at the Interboro School District very difficult, and she finally resigned. One specific instance was in May of 2012, Mr. Razzie, along with Bill Taggart, Ms. Phelps, Phyllis Floyd, and then Ed Murphy, put in or hired the former retired superintendent of the Interboro School District, Dr. Edmund Seketti. And they lied to him about the condition of the school district. And he was part of that. So he has very little credibility in telling the truth and how he conducted himself as a board director, because by the end of November of 2012, Dr. Seketti resigned, knowing that he had been duped in the conduct by the board directors at that time. So I think it's unfortunate that he would smear a current board director in an effort to promote his viewpoint of the election that's coming up for district justice. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Dobi.
Thank you, Mr. Dobi. I really appreciate that. Next up, we have Ms. Donna Franz.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few questions this evening. President Harris, I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer this, or if Mrs. Riley could answer it for me. Does the school district have a student attendance policy in effect?
I'll defer that to Mrs. Riley.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And what is that policy? Is there a certain number of days that a student must attend in order to be considered able to graduate?
State requirement.
It's a state requirement that students attend school. We have our own policy, and we follow the state guidelines on how many days they are absent and what our policy is to follow up. As far as school code is concerned, Mrs. Franz, I don't believe there is a specific number of days that a student has to attend to get counted for the year. That is something I'd have to look into.
Let me defer that to our solicitor, please.
Just, I mean, the overall general requirement for elementary-level kids is 900 hours a year. For secondary, it's 990 hours. That's a state law requirement.
And what about for high school students?
990 hours per year.
I don't know what the math is on that, but the reason why I bring this question to the board is, it has been brought to my attention that we have students who have missed over 100 days of school, especially this year, and the teachers have been told by administrators up at the high school to pass these students and let them graduate. And that concerns me as a parent, because, you know, when my kid was absent three or four days in a row, right away I got a letter saying that my kid is going to be truing and all this, you know, this, that, and the other thing. So I just find it disturbing that, you know, a kid can miss over 100 days of school, I don't know what that breaks down hourly, and be able to graduate. I just don't think it's fair, and I think that maybe the board or the administrators or you, Mrs. Riley, could really look into putting a policy in place that will prevent this from happening in the future. I don't think that teachers should be pressured into letting students graduate when they're not attending class, let alone barely passing the course. Okay. And then, Mrs. Riley, at the last school board meeting that I attended, there were some students who graduated last year who were being recognized, along with other students still in school, about the AP Scholar Awards. And you had told me that you would look into that and get back to me, and I didn't hear from you. But just so everybody knows, my concern was is that there were students that were listed on the banners, my son being one of them, I just happened to be here, that weren't notified that they were being recognized at that board meeting. And I did let parents know, and a few of the parents were upset, especially the students that were being acknowledged for the first time. They weren't given that opportunity to be present. So I didn't know if in the future, if something could be done about that, about notifying the students.
Mrs. Franz, I did talk to the high school administration about that, and for the future, we will make sure that letters go out notifying the families when the students will be presented, their names to be presented on the banner, so that they can attend.
Okay. I just think it's a great idea.
Yes, I agree with you.
You know, people should be given the opportunity as to whether or not they would like to attend.
Absolutely.
But I didn't see the banners hanging in the hallway.
I'm not sure why they're not up yet, Mrs. Franz. I'll have to check on that.
Okay, because I would like to, you know, take a picture of it.
Okay.
Moving right along, okay. As you know, I have a lot of friends and people in the community that reach out to me when they have certain concerns about things that are going on in the school district. And one of them is, I have friends whose children and have neighbors whose children have attended the Little Bucks program here at Interboro. And they have been told that the Little Bucks program is no longer available to out-of-district kids, and that the whole Bucks program is going to change over and is going to be, I guess, used for, it's going to be ran with grant money, and that it's only going to be for in-district kids and low-income families. Is this true?
Mrs. Riley.
Mrs. Franz, we are transitioning to a pre-K program, which is going to be taught by one of our elementary-certified teachers here in the district. It will, because it's being funded through, hopefully through, grant money, and there's two different grant directions it could go right now, where we have written a grant for the pre-K counts, which we have certain guidelines that we need to follow. So that is why, based on those regulations, we need to have our neediest students who reside in the district have the ability to participate in that program. But, you know, we've been looking at a lot of our kindergarten data, and what we have, you know, discovered is that many of our students who are even entering kindergarten don't have the basic skills that they need to enter kindergarten. So because it is being funded through grant, but it is an in-district program, we need to make sure that the students who are attending the program do reside in the district. This isn't a program that many public school districts have, so we are one of the few. And, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to really try and provide quality pre-K for our students. I left an article on the back table, not sure if you saw that yet.
No, I did not.
With why pre-K is so important for our students. So it is specific to Interboro children. We have reached out to every parent who was enrolled or who had sent in a deposit for Young Bucks. We have offered, you know, for them to go through the process to see if they do qualify. But if they're not residing in the district, they cannot attend. We are very strict about our residency policy, as you know, and we need to provide it to our students that live within our district.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I just, I'm curious as to what is happening with the teacher that was teaching the Young Bucks program. Is she being...
She will have a full caseload of Family Consumer Science classes. Ms. Cirkin from our community schools, she retired this year. So to not replace, to save money to put towards our deficit, we took one of our Family Consumer Science teachers and moved them down from the high school down to the middle school, so we could keep Family Consumer Science at the middle school. And Ms. Atmagen will now be teaching Family Consumer Science classes full-time, five classes.
And again, is this program for low-income families only?
We have to certain, we have to follow a certain criteria, so it is based on families that are living in the district that qualify under the guidelines that are provided by pre-K.
And what is the annual income for the families that qualify?
I can't, I don't, I can't tell you that off the top of my head, but we do have information on the website. If you go to the website, you will see a whole section on registering, and you will see that information on there.
Great. I appreciate that information.
Sure.
And lastly, I noticed on the agenda tonight, there are some resignations on here. And I just find it a little disturbing that, you know, in years past and, you know, this year as well, that there are teachers that the district has had issues with that are being accused of wrongdoing or found to be negligent or not able to perform their duties. And rather than let these teachers go, they're given the opportunity to resign with, I'm sure, a hefty benefit package. And I know you can't say to that effect, but I just wanted to make it a comment that I'm aware of it, I'm sure the community's aware of it, and I just think that we should do more to stop that from happening. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Mrs. Franz, sorry.
Finally, President Harris, we have Ms. Phyllis Floyd.
Phyllis Floyd for Prospect Park. See, I'll start out with Resolution 12.4, and an individual is being put into the custodial engineer at the high school. And it's not, it's about the position, not about the individual. I want to make that perfectly clear. And 12 point, oh God, where is it? Anyway, the person that he's replacing, I don't understand, somebody's being furloughed?
You know that's personnel. We can't discuss that.
It's right here in the agenda. It's not personnel. I mean, it's, I mean, it might be personnel, but it's public. It's right here in the agenda, that the individual's being furloughed, and the position that he had was this custodial engineer up at the high school. How can we furlough somebody with more seniority than the individual that's getting this job? To me, that's illegal. First in? Last in, first out? I think that should be on hold. That should really be put on hold, because that's questionable as to whether or not the district, whether the union agreed with it or not. The fact is, is that I think that there's going to be a labor issue here. As well as, it's very well-known that this person has had problems with administration over the years, and because he would not retire as requested, he has been, I won't go into all the details, but the fact of the matter is...
Mrs. Floyd, you understand that there was a restructuring, and he was furloughed. He's not been let go, he's been furloughed.
Okay, explain that. Laid off.
There was a restructuring.
So you furlough a person and put another person in that position who has less seniority? I don't, I don't understand your explanation. I'm sorry. I don't mean to give you a hard time. But, you know, restructuring and furloughing, I mean, this isn't a restructuring.
Comment if I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Mrs. Floyd, I'm not sure exactly, but we have gotten guidance from the HR director, and I believe the subject person did not have seniority in that class. He had come from a supervisor's position. Although he's been in the district longer, he didn't hold a union position for that long. So he didn't have seniority in that custodial class that Michael Giorgio does have.
Are you sure that he has that kind? Because he never held that position before.
As I said...
Excuse me, we can't discuss name, individual situations. I appreciate it, though, Mr.
That's a misunderstanding. I'm sorry. But the fact of the matter is, I think that's just a...
Okay. You can think what you want.
Smoke and mirrors, because the bottom line is, this individual that's being put in that position does not have experience here with the district, because he hasn't been with the district that long, and where he worked had nothing to do with the custodial engineer at the high school.
Okay, I'm done trying to change your mind. We did get guidance from the HR director on that, and it is perfectly within our bounds, our bounds and legal right to do so. Thank you.
Mrs. Floyd, if you would like to touch base with Mr. Chris Gola or I after the meeting, we'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Okay. I think somebody should talk to the labor attorney, because this is not a restructuring situation.
Mrs. Floyd, we went through all of these restructuring situations with the attorneys and the union, and we've handled that side of it, okay? But any questions you have on that, we'd be more than happy to talk to you after.
Okay. I'm just giving you a heads-up that don't be surprised if there's some kind of a lawsuit up the road. And no, I haven't talked to anybody. This is just my personal opinion from my experience when I was on the board, and what went on in regards to this individual and how he was treated. So anyway, it was told to us that this will be a zero deficit, zero fund balance money is going into the budget. However, our fund balance is extremely low. I saw the audit report from last year, it was 5-point-something million, and we're down to 2-point-something. And it's strongly recommended that we have at least 5% to 8% of the budget in the fund balance in order to keep our credit good, okay? With the older buildings that we have and with the various repairs that we have done, okay? If something happens, we're going to be behind the eight ball, because we're not going to be able to get the bond money like we have before, or if we do, we're going to pay through the nose in interest, just like a person with bad credit going for a mortgage or a loan, okay? So we're in trouble. We're in trouble. And so the debate was 3.4, okay? And then it got down to 3.2. But then we're going to eliminate the parenthood boards, the bulbs or fronts or whatever they are. We're going to, which would, I would think, have an effect on the learning or the instructional piece, you know? So $34,000 might seem wonderful, but how is it going to affect? The cleaning equipment, $26,844. I mean, there, we have to maintain the buildings. If we don't maintain the buildings, we're going to have additional problems. We're just, we're going to be in the shape that we were in back when I first got on this board, you know? And the fact of the matter is, it was deplorable, we had to, you know, build up the fund balance, we had to come up with, there was projects we had to do, roofs, this, that, and what have you. The fact of the matter is, we're going backwards instead of forward. Yes, a lot of good has been done. Yes, shaving a 4-point-something-million-dollar deficit, excellent that it's down to zero. But there are some things that are questionable as to, whether it be opinion or not, questionable as to whether or not it's, it's helping or hurting. So, and should there be something done over here instead of over here? The fact of the matter is, I, I don't want my taxes to go up. I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income, but a 3.4 to me would be better than cutting some of these little items out. I mean, Mr. Chivone, you wanted to cut out $8,000 to redo the community school floors. Well, there's more to it than just $8,000. We're talking about, again, maintaining versus replacing or repairing. You have to weigh what the money is for and how it's going to be helpful. I just think that some of the choices are, I don't know, what's the right word, frivolous? But, Mr. McGarvey, you did a wonderful job. You really did. That feasibility study, that was great. Mr. Harris, you've been doing wonderful, overseeing and putting in a lot of time and whatnot, and I applaud you for that. But I still think there's things, Mr. Burns, you know, some of the things that you've looked into or checked out, I mean, all of you. I'm not going to discredit anybody, but the fact of the matter is, there could be things that you're unaware of. Not that the administration is intentionally keeping things from you, but they might not have thought of it. And I just, I come to the meetings to offer my experience and input from what, you know, has gone on over the years. And I just hope that it's helpful, and I hope you don't take it as criticism, but as sincere help.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd.
Okay.
Okay. I've lost my place.
Number four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Motion 4.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on May 17, 2017, be approved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Next, number five.
Mr. President, there's no solicitor's report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, financial.
I'll read each one, and we can vote on them collectively. Number six, financial. 6.1, motion that the Treasurers' report for the month ending May 31, 2017, be approved. 6.2, motion that the fund disbursements in the amount of $5,277.27 be approved. 6.3, motion that the budget transfers for the fiscal year 2016-2017 be approved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Number seven, no correspondence this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Number eight, committee reports, finance, Mr. McGarvey.
Yes, Mr. President. The finance meeting met on Monday, June 5, 2017. Some of the highlights of the meeting follows, number one, the 2017-2018 budget update. The deficit on June 5, it's had 3.4% tax increase, is approximately $43,963 as of June 5. The proposed final 2017-18 budget was filed by... The proposed final 2017-18 budget was filed by May 31, 2017. Second, the athletic department presented their proposed budget to the school board. Number three, the preliminary financial statements as of May 31, 2017 were also included for the school board's review. And last item is, there was a discussion concerning proposals received by the district for the preventive maintenance of the food service equipment. The preventive maintenance would result in increased life expectancy, more efficient performance, less downtime due to constant repairs, and fewer major repairs. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey. Legislation, Mr. Burns?
A couple things just to highlight. There are a few things that are major right now in terms, we're going to talk about the budget tonight, and there's going to be discussion about voting on a 3.2% tax increase. And a few things that we need to understand is that, the two major factors outside of our control are pensions and charter. Right now, there's no pending legislation for significant charter reform, so I want to just make that known to everyone. I know I repeat it probably every meeting, and when there is some movement, I report on it, but right now, there's nothing major that's going to change that. So, we don't have any, anything significant that's going to stop our dollars from going out the door from a legislative standpoint. That's, I think, Ms. Riley's done a really good job of trying to keep things in-house, and this board collectively has, but our hands are sort of tied in that area. In terms of pension reform, Senate Bill 1, right now, is dealing with pension reform. And just to give you a little bit of insight, what it does is, it allows for long-term reform. So, anyone in 2019 will be given a series of one of three new plans. However, anybody that's currently, previous to 2019, we grandfathered in, they will have those same options, should they choose to exercise them, but there will be no changes to their pension plan. So, that is a step in the direction towards long-term reform, but nothing short-term. So, again, the board will be in a similar position as other school boards are across the Commonwealth, that we have no changes through legislation, and nor is there very little we can do as a board to circumvent the increased costs in pensions. Another thing I wanted to discuss is, there are, there's discussion about adding money, $100 million to the districts in the proposed budget plan that the legislation has right now. However, there are discussions about transportation cuts, and I made sure to look up Interboro, how that would affect Interboro, and for right now, it's projected Interboro would have a $48,000 and change transportation cut. But overall, we would be in a little bit better situation than some other districts, we would still be ahead with receiving an additional $140,000 and change overall to our budget. So, although there would be a cut in transportation, there would be a slight increase elsewhere. A couple other things, Senate Bill 76, I've talked about that. That deals with taking away of property taxes as being the funding source for school districts. I serve on the Delaware County Bar Association Board of Directors as well. We have paid significant attention to that, because to supplement that, if it was passed, legal services would need to be taxed, and other services would be. And from our information, from our lobbyists, and from what I've seen researching, it looks like Senate Bill 76 will not have enough traction to go through. This is something that sort of rears its head every three or four years, so we should just, you know, I'll continue to report on it, but I think, moving forward, that might be a moot point. There is discussion about a bill to eliminate the Keystone exams and use the SATs in its place. We could sit here and discuss and debate logic to that, and cost to that, but that is something that is being discussed in Harrisburg right now. And then finally, a couple minor things, there's discussion on restricting school districts on assessment appeals. So, while Senate Bill 76 looks like it doesn't have any traction, there might be another handcuff to districts appealing taxes, and that's in Senate Bill 586, and there's a mirror bill in the House, it's 1213. We discussed last time, I'm going to reiterate it, Senate Bill 227, for this board, you need to be aware that the, when it deals with superintendent's contracts, whether I'm on the board or not in the future, the board should be aware that the timeline is maybe down to 90 days. That's Senate Bill 227. And then, finally, there is a House Bill 224 that allows EpiPens to be administered by bus drivers who have the proper training, so that's a one little positive highlight that could potentially be saving lives with children that have allergies or have some sort of attack on a bus. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Delaware County Community College, Mr. McGarvey?
Yes, Mr. Harris, there is no report for Delaware County Community College for this month.
Thank you, I love the report. Delaware County Intermediate, that's me. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on June 17, 2017. The recognition of the DCIU Board effective July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, to include Edward Cordell of Chichester as president, Maureen Carey of Upper Darby as vice president, and retain Tom Brown as treasurer, and Michael Puppio as the solicitor. Also approved was the 2017-18 pre-K counts grant of renewal. Approved to extend an agreement with Radnor Township School District for personnel support. Approved to perform the 2017-18 healthcare insurance premiums with the Delaware County Public Schools Healthcare Trust. Approve a four-year contract agreement with educational support personnel. A special meeting for the DCIU Board of Directors was held on June 14, 2017, and there'll be another one July 12, 2017 at 6:30. For more news and information, go to DCIU.org. You now have the budget presentation.
Thank you. If all of the board members at this time could have a seat in the audience, thank Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're here to present to you the proposed budget for the 2017-18 school year. Mr. High School and I will be sharing this responsibility tonight. Before we get into the PowerPoint, I would like to thank the board for their continued support as we work through this process. As you know, from, if you're in attendance at the meetings or have been reading the newspaper, not only is this a difficult task for us, but it's a difficult task for school districts across the county and across the state. So, as we work through this process, our goal, as we look at programs and restructuring, how this is going to affect taxpayers, how this is going to affect our students, all of that is kept in mind as we move through this process. And I think with the support of the board, I think we've done a good job of trying to maintain our programs, to try and keep the increase to as minimal amount as we can, which is difficult this year, but I think we have tried to do our best. So, we would be more than happy to answer any questions that you would have at the end of the meeting. Hopefully, you will find this informative, it will be available on the website for anyone who would like to view it or would like a copy. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. High School. He will do the first couple slides on looking at our expenditures and our revenue.
Good evening. The three or four slides I'm going to go through, kind of give you an idea of the inflow and the outflow for the district. This first slide represents the revenue that we generate in the district every year. As you can see, there's three major sources, local, state, and federal. And obviously, the local is our majority where our revenue comes from. That includes taxpayer money, that includes local grants, contributions. State sources, those are subsidies payments. We get subsidy payments for special ed, basic ed, transportation, and so forth. Federal sources is our Title I money, our IDEA money, and also our KTO money, our Keystone opportunities. However, this is our last year for the Keystone's for opportunities, so the five-year deadline is up. So, that $617,000 is considerably less, it's about $580,000 or less, excuse me, than it was for this current year. So, we did take a major hit in the federal sources area. This is where, this is the outflow, this is where the expenditures are, this is where we spend our money. And as you can see, salary and benefits represent about 80% of our total expenditures. Instructional services, that obviously would be anything that has to do with the instruction of the kids in the schools. Support services are transportation, athletic department, central administration, and so forth. Debt services is our debt payments every year, and then facilities is obviously the plant maintenance and so forth. And then our school budgets, those are extremely important, it's a very low number, but we try to maintain those, so we don't really, we don't really do much with those. We don't want to compromise the education of the kids. This is, kind of gives you an idea of where we can tweak the budget, if you will. The bottom highlighted line there, the $4 million, that's basically what we can do as far as the non-fixed. Fixed costs, insurance, debt service, our specialized, our fixed costs, our leases for our buses and our vans are fixed. DCIU and the Delaware County Community College is basically fixed. So, when we do our budgets during the budget process, about 6.3% is the non-fixed, non-contractual. Now, we do have, the board does have some leeway when it comes to negotiations for contracts for salaries, however, once they're negotiated and approved, those are contractual. So, basically, you know, once it becomes an approved contract, we have to stick with that, so you can't redo someone's salary. Benefits are another one, we do shop around and try to get the best deal, but we're stuck with Peasars for retirement and so forth. So, bottom line is that about 6.3% is what we can, we can mess with and tweak for the non-fixed and the non-contractual expenditures. So, it does make things a little difficult at times, because you're not, out of a $66,000, I'm sorry, $65 million budget, you have $4 million you can look at, so. Is there one more?
So, as Marty stated, when you look at what drives the increases to our budget, pretty much salary and benefits is the highest percentage of where we, you know, what causes the increases to our budget. Healthcare costs, our Peasars contributions, if you look at the chart and you look at the 16-17 school year, there was a 30.03% contribution to Peasars with an increase of 4.19%, which for the district, it was $8.7 million. For next year, the increase is 32.57%, 2.54%, and that puts us over the $10 million mark in Peasars contributions. So, when Mr. Burns mentioned that one of the areas that, you know, we need to talk to our legislators, Peasars is what we need to be talking about, and we'll address that towards the end of the presentation. And the debt service, which Marty talked about, we have been doing a lot of work on the infrastructure of our buildings. We are in the last phase right now, which is Glen Olden. Once Glen Olden is done at the end of this summer, all of our schools will have updated HVAC, mechanical, boilers. It's a large investment from the district, but well worth it. The fund balance, I'll turn it back over to Marty to talk about this.
We have definitely seen a decrease in our fund balance, unassigned fund balance especially. The unassigned fund balance is the accumulation of all these surplus and deficits for the life of the school district, so that's an accumulation over the years. The committed fund balance, as you can see, we have four projects there now, that is committed by the board, and so that is for projects that are ongoing or for the future. And as you can see, we've gone from 6.5 in June of 2014, down to 3 million. That is the unassigned fund balance, and that is where our deficits from our budget are coming from. So, this year, we have budgeted a zero deficit for that unassigned fund balance. Now, the other committed fund balance, that will, that will increase or decrease over the years, depending on the projects. So, right now, those are the four major projects, well, the three major projects plus our, we did budget for the Peasars budget deficit for two years, and this year, we did not have to do that. So, at this time, for what we're proposing tonight, there will be no, there will be no hit to the fund balance for the unassigned. And it does, I guess, one more real quick thing, it does affect our bond issuance, so if we do have these major projects with the feasibility study that we've talked about, if we do have to go out for a bond, our rating was reduced, however, we're where everybody else is right now, in the majority of the school districts. So, at an AA minus, it was kind of the elite. At an A+, we're still in good shape, but this could affect that rating again if that fund balance continues to go down, so.
And we, of course, would like to get back to that double A minus rating at some point. Options that we look at when we are considering or looking for ways to balance the budget, of course, contracts are a number one priority for us, and our goal is to negotiate fiscally beneficial contracts to both parties. We look at reducing, restructuring, and eliminating programs, services, and staff. It's not something we want to do, but, you know, we see savings by looking at how we can reduce and restructure the programs. We put off, we defer from purchasing our textbooks, materials, and technology for our students. We defer capital improvement projects, which is, you know, what the discussion was on Monday Night at Work session, we held off on putting in interactive boards for Prospect Park School, and also the purchase of new equipment, cleaning equipment. We also had some other projects that come up through the feasibility study, based on discussions from the committee, and those things will, you know, we look at holding off on them due to our financial situation. And of course, last but not least, increase taxes as we need to do. So, the proposed tax increase for the 17-18 school year is a 3.2 tax increase. This will generate about $1.2 million, and we will see an increase to our mills. We have two charts up here, just historically, what our tax increases have been over the course of the last 10 years. As you see, in 2012-13, there was a 0% tax increase. You know, when we do 0% tax increases, that really does set us back, and at some point, we have to play catch-up, and that's really what we do. We feel the effects of that every year beyond whatever, when that 0% tax, you know, no 0, a 0% tax increase. So, we do still deal with that. When you look at our mill rate compared to other school districts, the new mill rates have not come out yet, because districts are still in the process of passing budgets, and they don't have their, the mill rate sheet ready, but we pulled this off of the county site, and that is for 16-17, which was last year. So, you will see Interboro falls right in the middle. I'm predicting that for the next year, we will probably still remain in the middle, though we could potentially fluctuate once we see where other districts are coming in. So, we are right in the middle. For a homeowner with an average assessed house of about $88,000, which is what the average assessment is in Interboro, it's about a $98 increase to your school taxes. And if your house is assessed lower or higher than that, you know, the chart is here for you to view. Let me go back here, okay. So, some of our staff changes for the upcoming school year, we have reduced German from a full-time position... We have reduced German from a full-time position to a .4 position at the high school. So, the, there will be two sections of German so that our students who are currently enrolled in German III and German IV can finish out their, their German coursework and get all, you know, get the full three or four years wherever they might be. We are eliminating Latin due to attrition. We are reducing our special ed staff by four positions, but it is only going to be the furlough of two teachers because due to the restructuring, we were able to fill, put backfill with, for those teachers in other positions. So, it is only two. We are reducing two math, math power professionals who will be reassigned to other positions. We will have to increase our Spanish because we want our students to have a language. They will need a language. So, we are increasing it by 1.6 positions, which would be eight additional sections of Spanish being taught at the high school. We are replacing the tech ed teacher with a STEM class at the middle school. As you know, Mr. Siderone retired this year. So, we are replacing with a teacher that is already on staff. We will be introducing a tech ed supplemental. We want our students to have the experience of working in the woodshop, so we will offer an after-school club for students that will rotate throughout the four community schools. We are reinstating one RTII position. We had a teacher who was working under the grant but is now, will now move back into being an RTII teacher, and that will, they will support all four of the community schools and the kindergarten. We are replacing the Director of Pupil Services with a Supervisor of Special Education. We are reducing our transportation dispatcher from a point, from a full-time to a .5. We are eliminating one position in the business office, and we are eliminating the district-wide attendance officer. So, they are the changes, proposed changes for next year. Some of our proposed highlights for the '17-'18 budget. We are implementing the AMPM pre-K four-year-old class, which we are very excited about. I have to say, within the last couple days, now that the information is out there, we've had a number of parents come in who are interested in learning about the program and who under, based on what our, what the registration process is, we do already have some students who are eligible to be enrolled. We are completing the infrastructure upgrades with Glen Olden this year. We are upgrading the data center at the administration building, and we are putting in a new operating platform and updating our cameras at the high school, along with other cameras throughout the district. Some grant opportunities that we have been working on for next year, as Mr. High School said, the KTO is going away after five years, which has bought in about $3.2 million to the district. So, you know, it's been a great opportunity for us. You know, unfortunately, these grants don't come along, but we are very vigilant about seeing what's out there because having, you know, this kind of money and bringing it into a school district really creates a lot of opportunities. A lot of our technology, a lot of our reading programs and textbooks, we have purchased through KTO. So, you know, as these type of grants come along, we will, of course, be applying. A couple for this year, there is some money left in KTO, so they are offering incentive grants, which we have applied for. This one is $25,000. We do have a technology grant through Boeing for $100,000. Also, the pre-K counts, $68,000, and CRES, and that's for our life school, life skills program at the high school. And again, back to what Mr. Burns was talking about, what's happening at Harrisburg. You know, the latest word is that there's an $800 million deficit for the state of Pennsylvania. So, these proposed funding increases for education with $100 million to basic ed, $25 million to special ed, and $75 to fund early childhood education programs, this is what's being proposed. But, you know, as the state tries to pass a budget, this could all change. So, we really, at this point, don't know. You know, Mr. Burns mentioned transportation. You know, we're very conservative when we do the budget. We do not put those increases in, the proposed increases from the state, because we just don't know what is going to happen. And we don't want to be caught in a situation where we've budgeted for these things, and then, you know, this changes, and then we're, we're in a tough position because we were expecting that money, and now we're not getting it. So, we are very conservative about when we budget for any of these proposed increases because we just don't know what is going to happen in Harrisburg. And what can you do as a taxpayer? Advocacy is really the key. You know, we, as community members, and as taxpayers, and for the children, we need to reach out to our local legislators, and that would be Senator McGaragall and Representative Nick Micorelli. I know the superintendents, we've had a number of conversations with them. We attend any meeting that the DCIU or the PSBA coordinates in which we have an opportunity to plead our case. We attend these meetings. Last month, Mr. Burns and I attended a press conference at Southeast Delco where they were really promoting, you know, the need for folks to advocate to increase not only early education, but just to advocate for school districts in general. So, we do try and attend these meetings and get out there in front of our legislators, but they need to hear from you. They need to hear from the community. They need to hear from the taxpayers that we need to see change, and we need to get, we need help. And that will come through, you know, changes to the pension plan, you know, trying to increase the funding, you know, for public schools. That's where the change is going to come because, you know, we can't continue to, you know, when Marty showed that small percentage of the budget that we have the, the ability to control, you know, each year, we incrementally, you know, are, you know, eliminating staff and things like that, restructuring programs. We have not gotten to the point where we have to completely eliminate a program, and that's not something that we want to do here. You know, we believe in having strong programs for our kids, being able to provide middle school language programs, you know, being able to offer all of our sports programs. So, you know, we need help, and this is where, you know, our taxpayers and our community members, you need to contact the local legislators. And one of our goals for next year is to really increase the amount of information that is getting out to you on what's happening at Harrisburg. So, you'll be hearing more about that after this summer. And that is our budget presentation for the '17-'18 proposed budget. I would like to, again, thank everyone, the directors, the principals, for all their help on this, and of course, the board. We've been working on this since the start of last year, and, you know, it's a lot of time that is put into this, you know, as we get to, you know, the vote here tonight by the board. So, I want to wish everybody a safe and enjoyable summer. If anyone has questions, please do not, you know, hesitate to contact Mr. High School or I at the administration building, or even here after the meeting. We're happy to talk to anyone.
Thank you for the presentation. Up next, number 10, Mr. Burns.
Number 10, President Harris' roll call. Motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018 with proposed expenditures of $65,767,821, requiring an increase of 1.1174 mills over the current millage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 3.2% for a new total millage rate of 36.0377 mills.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Mr. Evans.
I just wanted to thank the administration and the, and my fellow board members for all the effort that they've put forth in trying to arrive at a zero deficit with as little impact to the educational programs within the district, as well as trying to hold the line on the impact to our community and taxpayers. I think they did their level best to eliminate those programs that would not have a, a great impact and looking for economies throughout the various departmental budgets. Each, each director has had to come forth and, and provide essentially across the board reductions in each of their respective departments. And so, I'd like to thank all the various department heads as well for doing everything they could to help us arrive at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry. I echo that. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Sorry. Aye. I got this. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
No.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
No.
Mrs. Debatista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Motion passes 5-2. Number 11, please.
This is also a roll call motion, President Harris. Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent in accordance with Section 1124 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code of 1949, as amended in order to promote a more effective and efficient educational system, in order to conform with the standards of reorganization and improve the alteration or curtailment of the educational program, to prove the following actions effective: the close of the 2016-2017 school term as it relates to IEA staffing. Number one, the elimination of four special education teachers, and number two, the elimination of .6 German teacher.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
No.
Mrs. Debatista?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion, motion passes 5-2. Number 12, please.
Whereas the following matters are presented for action by the Interboro Board of School Directors, therefore it be number 12 personnel, 12.1 through 12.34.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 5-2. Next motion.
Several pages to flip through here.
Page 913.
Yes, number, yes, number 13, motion with regret that the following retirement be accepted. 13.1, that the Board of School Directors approve Jane Lenz, school assistant with eight years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 8th, 2017.
Second. I can't keep up.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next motion, please.
Number 14, Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, 14.1 through 14.17.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Number 15, please.
Number 15, Office of Special Education and Pupil Services, motion that the following items be approved, 15.1 through 15.9.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Number 16, please.
Number 16, Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 16.1 through 16.9.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Please, Mr. Evans.
I know that we did have to eliminate some improvements to technology for this, at least for this budget, but I hope that throughout the year, if we find any, any savings or availability, that we revisit the Promethean boards and the projector replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Number 17, please.
Number 17, Office of Facilities, going to split this one, starting with motion that the following items be approved, 17.1 through 17.4.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next motion, please.
Motion that the following items be approved, 17.5.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 6-1. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Motion that the following items be approved, 17.6 through 17.9.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next motion, please.
Final motion under number 17, motion that the following items be approved, 17.10.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 6-1.
Number 18, Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, 18.1 through 18.6.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next motion.
Number 19, this is a roll call motion, President Harris. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the textbook, textbook cost proposal from Pearson for Campbell Biology 11th Edition, advanced placement in the amount of $8,759.64 to be paid from ready-to-learn funds.
Second.
It has been moved in second. May I have a roll call? Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Debatista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Number 20, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the revision of the following policy in the category of pupils, number 200 pupils, Section 246, student wellness.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Any old business?
Well, you know, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure serving as secretary. I think this is my last meeting, and I think I have one more check room, but it's been my honor and pleasure. I appreciate the board's opportunity to allow me to serve as board secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other comments? Old business? Moving on to new business. Mrs. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. On June 13th, the class of 27017 graduated at Newman University. I would like to thank all of the individual people and organizations that provided scholarships to our students this year, which totaled over $95,000. So, that's an incredible amount of money, and again, thanks to all that contributed to those scholarships. Summer reading and math information, please check out the district website for all of our information regarding reading and math requirements this year. Summer packets for students are available in the vestibule of the administration building. Also, summer registration and residency verification has begun. Lots of information on the website. Please, if you are one of the grade levels that has to reregister for, or approve residency, please come in and try and get that done as early as possible. We do have evening hours available for those parents that need to work. All of that information is available on our website, and on behalf of the administration, I would like to wish everyone a safe and relaxing summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Any comments from the board members?
Comment? I just want to congratulate the softball team. I mean, I'm a big, little fun fact, Mike Burns is a big softball fan, and Oklahoma is my favorite team. They won the World Series this year, but it was really a joy to see Interboro's softball team really give a good run, a great season, and my hat's off to the, to the girls.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other comments, please?
Comment?
Mr. McGarvey.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Interboro School District staff, administrators, everybody who put in time on helping us out with this, with getting to this budget. And also, Mr. High School and Superintendent Riley for drafting the presentation that was given this evening. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey. Any other comments? Going one?
Yes.
Mr.?
Phelps.
Phelps, I can't hear all the way in there. Mr. Phelps, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to thank Bernadette Riley and Marty Haskell for their work on this budget. I know it was not easy. I know they brought a lot of things to the board and fighting back and forth what we would accept, what we wouldn't accept. I know it was a lot of work, but we do appreciate it. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Burns for his service as secretary. Did a good job as secretary, and I'm sure Mr. Evans will step up and fulfill your shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Any other comments? Going once, going twice, done. The next session of the Inner Borough Board of School Board Directors will convene in the boardroom administrative building on Monday, July 17th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. The next regular scheduled public meeting for the Inner Borough Board of School Directors will be convened in the multipurpose, the multi, listen, because I even didn't know that, the multipurpose kindergarten academy on Wednesday, July 19th, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting is adjourned.